And let's start. All right, go the order seven o'clock. The town of Horses Pointing Board meeting. Wednesday, February first. Need a motion to accept the minutes of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Make a motion to set the minute.
Motion in the second. Need for a discussion. Call the roll, please.
Joe Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Kern.
Hi.
Brendan Noel.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Roxanne Mark.
Hi.
Angela Hawken.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
I motion carry. We have correspondence, one of the town horses pointing board. Mr. Kenneth Castro, one thirty-five Vargo Road, Horses, New York. Representative Solar Project, relay motion, second to some correspondence.
Second.
Motion in the second, call the roll, please.
Joey Atkinson. I'm Brendan Noel.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Roxanne Mark.
Hi.
Angela Hawken.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
I motion carry. Old Business, seven forty-two B, Parker Solar Project. Two fifty-one to two sixty-seven, Breezeport Road, Horses, New York. S M W Solar Project, I'll look here. Very must.
All righty. Notice of public hearing. Please take notice at the point and border of the Town of Horseheads, New York will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February first, two thousand twenty-three. At seven P M. At the Town Hall, one fifty Y Gant Road, Horseheads, New York. On the request of C P Breezeport One L L C. And Randy Parker. For the Parker Solar Project for the property indicated. Well, I'm sorry, located at two fifty-one, two sixty-seven Breezeport Road, Horseheads, New York. One four eight four five. For a. Five of mega watt. Solar project, site plan review, tax map. Numbers are fifty point zero zero dash two dash forty-one point three one. Tax map number fifty point zero zero dash two dash forty-one point three two. And tax map number fifty point zero zero dash three dash four forty-six point two. The app, the application is open for inspection at the office of town clerk. At one fifty Y Gant Road, Horseheads, New York during regular office hours. Persons wishing to appear at the hearing may do so in person. Or by attorney or other representation. Communications in writing. Relative thereto may be filed with the. At or at such hearing. Thomas Ski B. Chairman. Planning Board. January ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and published one time in the Star Gazette on January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Has come to our attention like now. That. That the notices which were supposed to be sent. To the property owners within the distance were not done. It is not Mr. Parker's problem, he sent the notices out to the parties that he was given. But not it they. That list was not complete. I'm looking at that now to see sort of where we are. So because people come here because of the public notice that you may have gotten. We are going to open the public hearing. And allow people to talk. When we finish, when the last person has spoken, then we're going to adjourn the public hearing. To the March first planning board meeting, and then we're going to resend. We're gonna not resend, we're gonna send notices. To part the parties who should have received and did not. Get the notices. So we will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak will come to the podium, state your name, state your address. Upon being recognized, make your statement. The planning board does not participate in the. In the public hearing. So don't expect them to respond or do anything during the public hearing. If you have any questions during the public hearing, you state your questions. They'll be taken down and then they will be answered when the public hearing is closed, which will happen on March first. At that time. And if you speak, you have three minutes to make your statement. And then we can move on so that everybody gets an opportunity to be heard. So we will open the public hearing for anyone wishing to speak with regard to the Parker Solar Project. Anyone wish to speak, please?
I went little first.
I have a question. We have a map of like where we mapped out from.
This is the public hearing, so. State your name and address.
My name is Ken DeCastro, and I'm at one thirty-five Vargo Road.
We have that. Okay. State me at three minutes.
So. I think this should be moved till March first, I just got the answers to my question, which I gave in December. And haven't really had a chance to go over it. So I had a list of additional questions today, and I feel that I have to adjust now. So and I feel there's more research that needs to be done. You know, because we as a, I know myself, I have some concerns about that solar project. Though I do appreciate Tetra Tech, as you know, we had a nice book outside. Again, I just don't have enough time to digest. All the information you just gave me, and then I did give them additional questions, and if you want, we could be, you know, in contact together, I'll give you my contact information. And again, as long as they ally all our fears, you know, I think we're good, but I think we should move. You know. Kind of my comments and move in that public period. That's it.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Lisa Van Galus, and I live at one nineteen Vargo Road. I made myself. Pretty clear, I think, the last meeting that I don't want solar farm to be there. But beyond that, I would like to say for future considerations. Of solar projects. Could please consider putting them in places that are not inhabited by. Such as a neighborhood by people and wildlife. There are plenty other locations that could be utilized, that could possibly bring in even more money. And it was suggested at the county meeting I attended a few days ago. By another gentleman that. The county. Initiates the project so that the money comes from the projects back into the county, it's better fit, better. Benefit more people than just. One or two landowners and an out of state company. So if you would. Because the the. Solar farm is actually not a farm, of course, it is a. Installation of. A structure that's going to produce electricity, it's a utility. And it's going to be in my backyard, in our backyards, and it's going to. Impact our quality of life. And it's going to send the wildlife scattered to the forewinds, and I'm hoping they'll come back after their construction is over with, but it is a big deal, it's not just a single. Financial transaction between this company and the landlord. It's impacting many, many people.
One more minute.
So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak, please?
I would. I'm on Zoom.
And who are you?
My name is Lyndon DeCastro. Ken's wife, I was under the understanding that we.
Well, wait, well, one was that one second.
Okay.
Lyndon Castro, what's your address?
One three five Vargo Road.
I got it, okay, all righty, go ahead.
Okay, well, first I was under the impression that I had five minutes to speak and I timed myself pretty well.
You have three minutes.
I'll try to talk fast. Um. My husband Ken, his letter to the board has already touched on so many important safety environmental issues. I hope that the board takes each one of those items to heart and realizes how this is affecting so many of us, not just now, but will continue to do so in the future. Ken has also previously expect, expressed the nightmares that we have dealt with in former towns, so I won't go into all of that. But. There we did see mountainsides cleared for greedy endeavors over and over with no end in sight, and we all wondered who was allowing this. We did protest, we even marched on the town, but. The the land grabs and backdoor deals ran rampant, there was no stopping it. We count ourselves lucky that we moved when we did. The people that stayed have seen their property values decline, some are so house poor that they can't fathom how they will get through it. We visited our daughter in Horseheads for years and really felt if we were to move anywhere, this would be the place. We were searching for a home that had a view, a home off the beaten path, a home that could give us peace and quiet. We didn't want to be isolated. We wanted neighbors, but we also wanted space so that we all had privacy. Before I went to see our house, our realtor showed me pictures of the inside of the house, and I said to her, no way. Not only was it only a two bedroom, but I could tell from the pictures that the house would take way too much money and work to fix, but she turned to me and said, trust me, so I went. The moment I pulled into that driveway, I was in love. I stood on the edge of that driveway just to take in the view and thought to myself, this can't be real, grass, rolling hills and mountains for miles. We went into the house, and although the house had been neglected, was out of date and disrepair, it had water in the basement and a load of other problems, I called Ken from the back deck. And trying to contain my excitement, I simply said, hon, I found it. This was in the dead of winter, barren trees, snow on the ground, but I saw it, I saw it clear as day, this was home. We have since since spent tens of thousands of dollars to update and fix our home. We still have more to do, but let me tell you, it has been an absolute pleasure to see this old house turn into our dream home. Horseheads is our home. This is where we want to retire, this is where we want our grandchildren to come. For them to see the beauty of God's wondrous landscape, I'm sorry.
You have one more minute.
We have invested so much time and money in the house and the land. We were. Sorry. We cleared our the land in the back, but we were sure to leave half of it for the abundance of wildlife that comes to visit us on a daily basis, all of our neighbors. Have told us that they have moved there, built their homes for the same reasons we did, we are so devastated at the turn of events. This beautiful land will be scarred forever, we're concerned about the noise and the pounding of the seal steel post, Ken and I both work from home. Not only will it be a disturbance, but a constant nuisance for months, this is a family neighborhood. I'm trying to imagine a mother or father trying to get their little one down for a nap during the construction. We're concerned about wildlife, our well water, fire, property values.
Where, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak, please? Yes.
Okay, I'm Gary Vasili. I live at one forty-six Vargo Roll, which is across the street.
Okay.
I just wanted to let you know that was in my mailbox.
I don't know what it is.
It's the flyer for this meeting.
Well, it's not from the town.
From lots.
It's not from the town.
Oh, oh, I didn't know.
That was from both of us were concerned.
Oh, because I just want to know where it came from. Yeah.
Other than they shouldn't put it in your mailbox. That's it.
Okay, well, I just wanted to know, I did get that information, and I knew about the meeting anyway, because I was going to be here for the things.
Did you didn't, did you get a letter?
No.
Okay.
No, I did not.
I hadn't gotten to your name yet.
That's all I have is the flyer. Thank you, Gary.
All right, go, you you want, you have a statement to make?
Well, the only real concern I have this too, actually, the wildlife is certainly going to get interrupted, I mean. You got to have a fence around the whole thing, so somewhere is along the line, you're going to deter everything to different directions. Okay? And you're also, you know, you're interfering with everything that is up there. And 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 what the only question I really had was. I mean, I I've been involved with solar farms for many of them, as a matter of fact, is there a legal distance they have to be away from the back of the house? From the town standpoint?
We'll take the question, it'll be answered when the public hearing is completed, which will be next one.
I want to know what the legal distance is that you're making mandatory, that's that's what I'd like to do. Okay? That's all.
I agree, thank you so much.
Yep.
Anyone else wish to speak, please? Anyone at all? Okay. Mrs. DeCastro will come back now, you 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 have another two minutes. You got to unmute her. Well. You you got to unmute.
Okay.
There you go, you have another two minutes.
First of all, I'm not against clean energy, however, I asked the board who exactly is benefiting from the solar project? And let's be clear, it's not a farm like Lisa said. They use the word farm to make it sound palatable, but it's not a farm, it's an industrial energy producing plant. In the middle of a family neighborhood, I asked the board to be sympathetic to the fact that the constant noise of hundreds of motors running. That sound like vacuums, a term used to describe the this, the sound in the December meeting. Will pollute the sound of the birds singing and the trees rustling in the wind, it will scare away the wildlife. I invite you all to come to our home and see and hear what we hear. We are, we ask you to understand the impact this project will have on so many people, the environment, the quality of our lives and our futures. I asked Clear Path directly, why was it so important to block the view of this plant from Breezeport Road? It sounds like they have gone to great lengths to ensure this, if this project was on Breezeport Road, I would drive by at forty-five miles an hour and barely notice it. Come up to Vargo Road and see what we see, and see exactly how much of this plant we will look at every day of every year. It won't be a sliver of the plant, another term that was used in December, in fact, in looking at the plan maps, we will see quite a bit of it, especially in the winter. The the panels will be facing us, the glare coming from them is inevitable, and yes, we still have those beautiful surrounding mountains as a backdrop, which they mentioned in December. But we will have an absolute eyesore right smack in the middle of the neighborhood. Is there anything that they can do to help us, are they willing to help us? Can they plant tall enough trees around the fence to hide this from view and possibly muffle the sounds? Can they move the plant further south on the parcel so that we don't have to see it at all? Can you please take a moment and ask yourselves? Are you really good neighbors? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, appreciate it, anyone else, please, before we close the public here? I'm sorry, we adjourned the public hearing.
No.
Yes.
Hi. I live at one twenty-five Vargo, and my name is Crystal Root.
All righty, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions, these are, we never got a letter about anything either, I just wanted to know like where the panels are going to go, like the grid, where they replaced. How far back in the street that they have to be, and how they're going to be hidden? The noise of construction, like the the lot is literally right next to my house, and I have two kids, so. They already get woken up by other animals anyways, I mean, what can we benefit off this, do we get some tax breaks or something? Just kidding, but like a fence around it or something to deter that, so I have to look at that every day. Like right next to our house, so I mean. It's just, it's a lot for everybody that's lived on our street, we have a great view, look out back, sunsets, sunrise, I mean. It's kind of depressing that we have to look at that now. You have new houses being sold up there because of. What do they have? Privacy. Well.
All righty, thank you. Anyone else, please? Motion's in order to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Seven.
Better motion in second. Call the roll, please.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
John Kern.
Hi.
Brendan Noel.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Roxanne Mark.
Hi.
Angela Hawken. I.
I motion carry. Does that can be readvertised or just?
We're gonna, we're going to, yes, we we don't have to, but I I believe we should readvertise it. And we will sit, I'll be in Friday, we'll sit and try to go over. And make sure we get where the five hundred feet is and that everybody gets. Gets the appropriate notice because something didn't happen. I apologize for those who didn't get a notice. Oh. All right.
Okay. So we're on to. Be old business. All right, moving to item B, seven ninety-eight A, Facility Construction Solutions LLC. Thirty-one to forty-five Way, grown horse heads, final site plane review. Or the addition to the backside of just in going, forty foot by sixty foot. Gary, you're up.
Yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm here.
So we were waiting for the county to get back to us, and then I believe it was local determination, it was in the county planning. Did you happen to go to that at all?
No, I did not. And I didn't, I mean, they told me, the meeting was like Thursday night, I knew about it, but I didn't go.
All right.
They didn't really invite me, but I didn't go.
There is no invitation.
Yeah, so I figured.
So.
Yeah.
That was only thing that was holding us up. Very well, and the final site plan.
Local.
Local determination.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, which we would expect, yeah.
So we're going to go through the part two seeker, you have extra copies of the.
Thank you.
You pass out to the board, we'll do that, and then we can set to the final site.
Brendan Noel.
Then we're going to try to chime in. All right, so we'll do the part two. Propose action create a material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. We know it would be a small impact, zone business, there's a zone. It's where we want business to be in the business zone. Consistent with the business zone, so that'd be a small impact. The boys actually result in the change in the use intensity of the use of the land. Small impact, it's putting three bays, again, is that. Huge impact, there is, it's a small impact, it wouldn't be a large one or no impact, so. Those action impair the character or quality of existing unity. So I can know. Propose action have impact on environmental characteristics that cause an establishment, a critical environmental area. That would be known. I hear things. Your wishes.
That's usually not a good thing.
No.
That sounded good.
Boys actually result in the adverse change to existing level of traffic. Or that existing infrastructure for master as a biking or walkway. Addition of buildings not going to increase the level of traffic. They bring cars in and they drop them off. It's not like a. A department store or liquor tile where people come in and out all the time is pretty, pretty static.
Yeah, it's pretty static, yeah.
So.
You hope that, what's that? You hope a business comes up a little. It's up a lot already, that's the reason we're doing this. I don't know, beer world just went out of business, yeah.
Oh, did?
Yeah. Did you know that?
I'm not surprised.
Exactly.
Never.
Down the corner, beer world.
Where Wernix was.
I can't break.
Oh, did they go out, did they?
Yeah, they shut it, they shut the doors.
Yeah, I was, I didn't think it would anyway.
Well, the proposed action causes an increase in the use of energy. It fails to incorporate a reasonable available energy conservation, renewable energy opportunities. Be it no or small impact, building's got to meet state energy goal, so it's addressed through that. Whether propose action impact existing public water supplies. No. Public wastewater treatment facilities, no. With the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic. Archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources. You're not in that neighborhood. Now, you got a bad neighborhood.
Artwork.
Thanks.
But you know what I mean?
Yes.
Boys actually result in the adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, or fauna. I know there's no wetlands close. No water bodies, anything like that would have any impact on it. I both actually result in increasing pressure to for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems. That would be no, all his. Water's got to be kept on its property, he's got a big enough lot that if any runoff.
He also has a new driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the bar.
So.
So that he's running up. So I will.
I think that was one of the things from the county.
Yeah, they kind of, they were, they weren't too sure that that was enough water.
Right.
It handles it. Handle, so that was what it kind of said.
And plus, you've got a back, you can cheap blow that off to the back and keep it on your property.
Yeah, it's a long way. I'll repeat it is, it's a long ways.
Yeah, so. I've always actually created hazard to the environmental resources or human health. I have a, no. Um.
You're putting them.
Is.
Anything like that, and like now?
No. You know, paint boost, if you've got them, it's got to be self-contained, he's got to have a D E C R quality permit, so you know, it's got to be up on that stuff, so.
Not adding any of that in.
No.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Strictly base.
Basically.
Work on it, it's all it is.
Good, all right. So on the back, I'm going to check the box, it says we've determined based on the information. Analysis of all and supporting documentation, those action will not result in a significant adverse environmental impacts. Just going to fill this out, so I don't forget it. So we need a motion to accept the seeker as a unlisted action. Uncoordinated review. In that we have found that there is. A no significant adverse environmental impacts for the project.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, call the roll, please.
Joe Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Kern.
Hi.
Brendan Noel.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Roxanne Mark.
Hi.
Angela Hawken.
I.
Motion, yeah, I motion carry. With that, we need to accept this as a final site plan.
So move. Go ahead, Brenda. So move.
Give your motion, and it's, you're, I take you Roxanne, you're the second, then.
Sure.
Sure, okay. A motion in the second. Any further discussion? They call the roll, please.
Joey Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Kern.
Hi.
Brendan Noel.
Hi.
Amy Crandall.
Hi.
Roxanne Mark.
Hi.
Angela Hawken.
Hi.
I'm Stevie.
Hi, motion carry. So go see Greggy. For some building plans, and he can get you going and continue to get going.
Obviously, tomorrow, he's listening, and I know he is.
He's watching over your shoulder.
Yeah.
You're good to go, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, good luck. Yeah, this. Seeker. All right. All business, A R Building Company, ninety-two corner Drive Horses, this was referred to the town board, Peter Damon. What do we stand with it, the board standing there, Jane?
What's this, huh?
The.
There's a public hearing called for next week.
All right. So so we'll see something probably. Starting in. March, maybe March, I just, so this can do this on the agenda. Okay? All right, so moving on to new business, A seven forty-four. We, I'm probably about set pretty good, my apologies. Two oh six Arthur Street, Horses, New York. Uh, two oh six Arthur Street, horses, New York. Area variance, front porch. Existing setback is twenty-four point six six feet. Want to add an additional ten foot coverage porch. Advocate it as soon as we leave of any points in the hall of beings.
The house next door has almost the exact thing that they're asking for, so I don't see. How we could have, how it could be allowed there and not allowed.
Okay.
For them.
Yeah, if you will.
Two oh eight.
Arthur Street is a sixty foot.
I was gonna say, I thought possibly the road wasn't in the center of the right way, but I knew they had quite a front yard.
Usually we have fifty feet when you get down in that area. Uh, Arnold, um, in the patch area with that you're in, um. Even over on, um. Lewis Street and all that, that whole area is sixty foot right away instead of fifty. So, we've got a lot of variances come in because of the. The road right away is is larger than than usual. Um, even the subdivisions and development, we. So, um. I can see why they, they want my porch and number two. You know, variance.
The way the house is right now, there's not even a set of front steps off that front.
Yeah, they're having to.
They they took it away and, yeah, in anticipation that they're gonna be able to build.
So, I I looked at this two and ago, based on. The, um. Sixty, sixty four right right away through there and the house itself is at. The front side back. Uh, the impact is gonna be minimal, when you say, I didn't get down there, but you say that house next door is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that was, my question would have been, you know, if it, if there was a variance or something like that, when that house was the new, it's a newer house and it was built. And it's got a, and it's got a garage that sticks out there that ten, almost that ten feet in front of there, so they're. They're in that same location as what this porch would be. I mean, the rest of the street, you can see the. The, uh, offset line right down through because there's a fence and everything like that, if you look at the house and. The line is right down there, but the, but they're the last two. Houses on that road and the the one houses does have that driveway sticking out, or the garage out in front of it.
Alright, so. Any recommendation to the zoning board of appeals?
I'll make a positive recommendation, the zoning board of appeals. To allow. The. Relief ten point three four feet of relief.
A second. Do we need to put in that positive recommendation, anything about the house next door, because I know that. The Z B A is probably gonna look at that and say, well, gee, they're asking for a lot. But if there's. If there is some.
Referral.
Yeah, if there is some explanation. That.
We could say.
A house in the neighborhood is almost exactly the same.
Based on the neighborhood.
Yes.
The house is next door.
Yes.
Based on the, uh.
That would be fine.
Um, the sixty four right away, um, instead of a fifty, but this normally.
Yes.
And. In the past, we've had other. Variances, maybe not right next door, but in that neighborhood area because of the sixty four.
Over on the other street, over on the other street, the street actually goes through the porches.
Yeah. Well, and and there's one over in there where the front yard is in the town and the backyard is in the village, who, you know, I mean, who knows what regulations they file. But we, the same situation was, um, one of the streets that runs off Fairview down with Fairgrounds where. Most of the houses had a porch on the front and the one guy needed a variance to get a porch and it was no different than anybody else on the street.
Right. But it.
Yeah.
Okay, so those are all comments that we can make sure that the Z B A has. Our board minutes so they can see why we came up with a decision.
Yeah, and I'm only asking for that because we have had times when we've all agreed that something was a good idea. And yet, without adding any explanation to it, the Z B A voted exactly the opposite way.
Well, what's a good idea is that we go through there. We resurvey the road and then we convey the front. Five feet to each side. But.
You're gonna get.
It's easier to do various.
Well, I wasn't sure too, this is in that. In that, uh, uh, existing right away. How much utilities were picked up and all that type of thing, those they were trying to keep within the right away. Cause I know there's a pole line down through there, but I mean, there's probably water and sewer or something like that. It could be within that right away that they were trying to make pain in. In the. In that.
The time this was done.
Well, I mean, eh, state always told everybody to move everything to the outside of the right way anyway, so. In this case, they probably moved everything to the outside of the right way and that's where it ended up.
So we have a motion in second, any further discussion? Hey, call the roll, please.
Joe Atkinson.
Hi.
Alan Kern.
Alright.
Brendan Noel. Amy Crandall. Roxanne Mark. I. Angela Hopkins. I'm Steve.
I motion carried. I'm gonna be or seeing any. Discussion on. Overlays zones or discussion number one, meaning that. First, you want to breed of residential A and town roads.
I asked for that to be put in.
I I, I mean. We've, we've talked about this and it just can't be a general thing because we've got areas. Like this, it should remain residential A.
And, yeah, and I don't think it's anything that certainly gets taken care of in one night, but.
And then like.
Keep having people come back for. For change, you know, well, just as Randy Parker did, because he wants to put his. Like shed or barn or something and.
Well, he, he's asking for that, for that variance, but, uh.
The only thing I did think of even after I was discussing it with you is that. If they can only have chickens and horses in an agricultural zone, if we eliminate the two fifty. Then everybody along there in the, you know, in. Where the egg and hill comes right out to the road, they can have their chickens and probably their neighbors aren't gonna be thrilled.
Yeah, what's the right answer, do you have, you know, you've got two hundred and fifty foot of road frontage. And you've got X amount of acres that you can have horses or farm animals in that. Area, it's on A now, if you make it, you know. I don't know what the right answer.
I don't either, I was just looking for a way to avoid always having to go for. A variance on something.
No, it's, you know. I understand. You know, we, people like the demo, they have a lot of land, say, on Breezeport Road. And there's a barn that, well, now there's maybe the two hundred and fifty feet back or five hundred feet back.
Right.
And then horse stable can be within two hundred and fifty foot of another property line and. You know, doesn't make sense, I don't know.
So, the, the other thing is, in 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 an agricultural zone, so if we just yank the agricultural zone out. In order to, to build a, to build a hu- a house. You would need a minimum of one acre of road furniture, two hundred feet of furniture, so the question is. Would we want that? I mean, you know, you 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 know, do you wanna, we we can take care of that. Uh, to, to make sure that you don't have to have, uh. Have to have that, that wide, because a lot of, a lot of them out there don't. Now they have to have septic, so they'd have to.
I was gonna say, the only other thing is, they need to have, they need to have a certain amount of area.
Two and a half acres.
Yeah, so I mean, they almost need that.
No, you can, they can, they can, you can, they can build on nine thousand square feet. As long as, as long as a septic can be designed for, they can build in. Now, the problem is a lot of times they can't.
You get out there, you got.
Cause our residents say zone only requires a ninety thousand square foot lot.
Did you get out there, you got clay soils?
Get differences.
Yeah.
So they might be able to put it on a smaller lot, but the cost of the system. Mount system, whatever it happens to be, might be thirty, forty, fifty grand. So, there's other things to look at, but, uh.
See, I'm a, a fan of what we did there, um, because I. I think it should be, I mean, just for him to put up a barn or a structure. For a business, I mean, that's pretty much what he was doing. With that barn. Um, and that was the reason why I I I didn't quite understand. The total concept of why that wouldn't have been allowed. In our code to build a structure for. Storage of equipment or anything, I mean, it was basically. On a residential A.
He doesn't, he be. Probably a few reasons, one is whatever it was gonna be used for might not have fit a residential lot. Uh, the other thing is, uh. Depending on where the residential lots sit. That's an accessory building. And you have to have a primary building in order to build an accessory building.
He had a house there, so, I mean.
And maybe, yeah, I may allow it or not, that's the. So.
Then you look at agribusiness things and all that, people are doing that, you know, work. I guess I see where Roxy is coming from, but. I guess how do we.
No, it creates a bigger problem than what we have already, I was just looking for some way to. But points up other issues that I hadn't considered.
Something that we have to consider.
Well, we can leave it on the agenda for as long as overlays have been on there.
Well, what you brought up, Roxanne, is is some good points, so as you, we talked already, you, you kind of think, I don't think. My town veteran. All the main roads are residential agricultural. And you need two hundred and fifty foot of road furniture, minimum of, I forget how many acres up there to build on. And they're rural roads.
Yeah, so that two fifty is pretty standard.
In their town, yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe not, but it's, you know. It's, you know, it's.
And you know, Jen, if it hadn't been for your father, none of this would be occurring today.
Yeah, but we might have a landfill up here.
Oh, that's true.
So we leave it on and.
We have all that. Stuff coming out of the ground and flowing somewhere.
Anything else for the good of the board? Maybe we could. Roxanne, maybe we could do some research on. We get the general code, we can have access to, oh, you know, they got general code publishers have all kinds of. You know, maybe find some agricultural residential zoning that might. Work for us.
Greg used to term, what was it? Rural, rural residential, if I'm remembering it correctly, maybe, maybe that's another.
Yeah, maybe some. You know, we, General Code does our code and they, they've got a website that's got all, everybody that's. You know, they are, they're clients, and it's a good way to maybe do some research and see what's, what's out there. The best thing that you get, you know, you steal from somebody else instead of rewriting your own, so. Might be a good idea just to see what's out there. Anything else? With that, well, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Call the roll, please.
Do you really think anybody's gonna object?
Joe Atkinson. I'm sorry. I'm Steve.
I was the one that guy asked the question about setback for the solar panels.
Thank you.
Seventy-five feet in the property line. Yeah, we were just looking it up here on the.
Yeah, it's all.
It's all in the.